We need to get that figured out, and I'm sure that we will. But at the end of the day, that is commercially his own property, and those are permitted uses in the town wells. And I don't feel that, you know, a business should be penalized for being a business. It's a bar, and I've been there too. I haven't been there that frequently. I don't know Joe, but every time I've been in, what I've seen is a respectful atmosphere. And he's, what I've seen, he's always done his best to control the noise, so.
Can I say, and I agree with all of you, the three of you, that it's a business, and that's what it's, and it's been there a long time. And, and so if people, and I feel badly if they move do it next door and they, they don't like the music, but that place has been there, that's their livelihood, and it is a commercial entity. And the other thing is, this is only till 9:30. It's barely dark then. So, and he's gonna, if he moves it inside, moves it inside. But I don't have a, I just don't have a problem with it. That's what the entertainment license is for, that's what the commercial property can have, and they should be able to have it.
Well, clearly, as I asked the question earlier about working with Joe, and I'm glad Joe had the ability to call in. I'm just gonna take the, the other side to be middle of the road here for the sake that people have the right to enjoy their properties, and I'm all about that. But it sounds to me as if Joe is gonna move the music inside for at night. He's gonna have music outside, but only during the day, which is a great compromise. Agree with everybody and suggest, because this goes, the noise ordinance, this goes back a few years where we were dealing with it, and it was, they didn't have the science of the decibel readings and things at that point in time that I'm aware of, but I think it definitely needs to be revisited. But John, if you want to put this on for our next meeting, start looking into this and get the code office involved. This is something that we can move forward on pretty quickly and change the ordinance for the benefit of all people. But I appreciate the comments that came in, and I appreciate Joe's comments that he's very willing to work with the neighbors, make this applicable and happy for everyone, which I'm sure we can get to.
Right, but the ordinance is not what we're voting on tonight.
No, we're going on a special.
Yes, permit, right, okay, good. I just, I know, I'm voting on this.
Chris, any other callers, any other comments?
We have one more question that's been waiting, and then Michael Monahan wants to say something else. So, all right, I'll let this new person talk. Can you hear us? Joni, hello?
You're muted, just so you know, Joni.
All right, she's not responding, so we'll go back to Michael.
I got it, I'm here.
Okay, she's there.
Sorry about that, this is my first time using Zoom.
That's okay, Joe, go ahead, we can hear you.
Oh, thank you. I'm from Massachusetts, and I have a place up at Pine de Rosa Campground on Hilton's Lane. We've been up there now for the last 12 years. And we were up there two weeks ago to open, and since that time, I've seen so many different things about whether or not we're allowed to come up. And if we do come up on a weekend, we have to have a COVID test done every single weekend. And the other thing is, I would like to say is, there was a gentleman that was on Facebook in one of...
Guys, do you want, do you want to take this right now? Okay, Joni. Yeah.
Write the question.
Yeah, Joni, you can type your questions, and they'll answer it for Open to the Public. All right, we'll go back to Michael. Michael, are you there?
Yes, I am, thank you for the additional opportunity. I just want to clarify some of the comments and statements that were made. When, I think the buyers have been aware at Lindsey Green, we know that we are zoned business. We are a hotel motel, we know that, we are not residential. And for example, when we bought our unit 26 years ago, Failey's Pub was Lindsey Tavern. Piano music. We're very aware of what is around us. The issue, the biggest issue, quite frankly, is the amplification of music and the current sound systems. The fact that the building, if you will, and now the outside, maybe, so that'll go away, is not built for the, the type of amplification in today's sound systems. We've said this before, we've attempted to have this discussion before. And I don't know if y'all remember, what was Marcia's Pub? And excuse my English, that was hell, absolute hell. And it became Failey's Pub after that. And gentleman kept his music inside. And I'm not trying to dispute that Mr. Ryan has the rights to do business, he certainly does. We want a very successful business there. We do feel we are entitled to our privacy. We've never been exposed to the decibel reading that Mr. Ryan has taken. We have no knowledge of that, we've not been involved with it. We've asked for people to come onto our property and listen. Okay, and I'm happy to have them come, have Mr. Ryan or whomever come on and with a decibel reading at the appropriate time. The other point of clarification, when their special, or the zoning, I get to get the right word, when the, when the site plan was modified to include the outside deck, we made comments to the planning board. And I was told in no unclear terms, told very precisely, there would be no outside music. So if there was, if there was discussion after that, to which we were not involved, I think the folks at Lindsey Green would be quite upset. We were told there would be no outside music, that there would be a six-foot perimeter around the deck, which I think they are putting on. But the fact that there'll be outside music doesn't fit with the site itself and the contour of the land. It's going to travel. That's why we, that's why we asked for that. So please, please understand, we are a business, we are not residential. Okay, because I've heard a couple of you say, you know, we're residential, we have to understand. We do understand what we live next to. We have just as much right as Mr. Ryan to run a business. And it would be very, very difficult to run a business at 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock at night, when you have young children attempting to sleep, or whoever, attempting to enjoy their property. So anyways, thank you for, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Schedule a meeting? Can we schedule a meeting? Can we schedule a meeting, a workshop, to, to really work on this?
We're gonna be taking it up at our next meeting. And we pretty much don't do workshops anymore for full transparency, we work on these things. What we do off the air pretty much is executive sessions where we're talking about personnel issues and whatnot. We'll be, we'll be dealing with this at our next meeting, as I asked the town manager to schedule it already.
Okay, is there something we can assist with?
You can come to the meeting, you can come to the meeting and voice your, it'll be open to the public, so. You can come to the meeting and restate what you're talking about tonight, so your desire.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Anything else from the board at this point? Any other question here, Chris?
Yeah, Joe Failey has a, one more comment, if you want to hear it.
Okay, we'll take it.
Joe, you're on.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, I just want to talk, just real brief on Michael Mina's last comment. Outdoor music, are we totally, totally against music at Lindsey Commons? Totally. Number one, and number two, with the deck being built, and we put in a six-foot fence all around the deck, which is nine foot from the ground, that is in self a buffer zone from the inside music. That is going to help these people, believe it or not. That's all I have to say, guys.
All right, Joe, thank you.
Okay, that's, that's everything.
If nothing else, at this point in time, if there's no other comments, I'll take a motion.
I'm over that we close the public hearing and grant the license.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Five-zero, thank you. And John, you'll put that on our next, two weeks from now, on our next meeting to start discussion.
We'll work on an ordinance, I believe the noise is part of 145.
Yes, it's part of 145, we did work on ordinance for last November, which I believe we put aside based on everything that came up, so we have started to work on that.
Yeah, there's a partial ordinance drafted, we'll bring that forward for discussion.
Great, thank you. Next on the agenda is the 19th update, John.
Mr. Chairman, members of board, a lot of things keep moving in the state as it tries to reopen. As you may know, the governor has reopened the restaurants as of tomorrow for in, inside dining. Outside dining, we have worked with over a two dozen facilities and through the efforts of the planner and code enforcement and, and public safety, we've made every attempt possible to help these folks be open. And as far as I know, things are pretty busy with many of the restaurants right now. And what the governor has also done is to begin to concentrate on our town meeting, voting in July, July 14th is our elections. She has encouraged through the Secretary of State to go absentee balloting. There are many people who are requesting absentee ballots. We are working with our town attorney to give some guidance to our town clerk as we begin to plan the election polling areas for safety, COVID safety and compliance. We are opening our beach restrooms for the weekend. We have a protocol in place. Our cleaner will be following it, as well as opening our playgrounds. We hope as we move forward that other things can open and be in such a state to welcome our visitors from, from the south as they make reservations in the hotels and campgrounds and other lodging facilities. We are slowly working to design the harbor park for concerts for the summer, and we'll be concentrating on that for our first concert on July 4th. We've been able to move all the park benches down there, and hopefully done so in a COVID-19 manner. And we'll have to have some bodies down there to make sure that the volume of people don't get out of hand or out of compliance. We are working towards, through Captain Shabbat of the Police Department and myself, we are putting together a grant opportunity that the state is allowing municipalities apply for under the COVID-19 funding that she's set aside $13 million for. We're looking at educational materials, as well as beach ambassadors that would help with compliance purposes at the beach and, and different areas. We have a total of, with, with a sign, new sign board and everything, it's about $137,000 request that would be paid for by the state. And that will be going into the state this Friday. So we've been attending webinars, or the captain has, and we think we have a pretty good shot at, at this. Maybe Sean, did you want to talk about the stimulus?
Yeah, so right now, Project Stimulus, for those of you that are not aware, it's a fundraising effort that my fiancee Emily and I have been working on for almost two months now, raising money for all the Wells businesses that are struggling in this time. Way it works, we have a basket raffle and a live auction, which is gonna be this Thursday, June 18th at 8:00 p.m. via Facebook Live. You can join our Facebook page, it's called Project Stimulus Wells Maine. You can buy tickets up until tomorrow for the basket raffle, then the live auction. You just join us right on, at 8:00 p.m. on June 18th, and bid right in the comment section of our Facebook Live video on the 35 some odd baskets that we have, excuse me, auction items that we have, and we have about 125 basket raffle items that the tickets can be purchased to use towards. Right now, we are up to PayPal, we are up to $24,000 that we have raised. So we have far exceeded our goal, which was 12,000. And we're hoping to break 30,000 by the end of this, and I think it's gonna be really great. Every penny is going straight back to the businesses that have participated, and would like to receive proceeds from this. So this is all strictly just to help businesses. We understand they're hurting at this time, and I really think we're gonna see a lot of benefit from this. So really happy with, with how much this amazing community has stepped up, donated, helped out, provided community baskets. It's really just been a special thing to see the community, and people that visit Wells as well, just participating and, and taking part and loving their community.
Nice, Bob, nice job, Sean and Emily.
Thank you, it's been fun.
Anything else, John?
No.
Okay, moving on to good news. We can tell 24,000, that was good news to start things.
And I know with project graduation, we, we had a tremendous parade. Maybe Tim would like to speak to that?
Sure, John, you're good at segues tonight, you're, you're good at that. The, first of all, let me thank Jim Lapola, Joanne Putnam and Chief Dupree for, I don't know why I have such a tough time with the fire chief's name, I struggle with it, sorry, chief. But all helped out big time with this parade that we had on last Sunday. And I don't know who saw it or who didn't, but it was a giant hit, you know. Unfortunately, when you have giant hits, they want to do it again, you know, next year. But it was, it was, they said the parade route was, was lined with people, and, and everybody was excited, the kids loved it. It, it just was a great day for those kids that aren't seeing what is a traditional graduation. And, and it was just a great day. You know, we wound things up on Thursday night. We had the senior class to the Saco Drive-In, which was a different experience also, where they watched kind of like everything that happened during the week. So they got to see themselves march in, even though it was a different type of marching, and they got to see themselves get their diploma on stage. And, and so it, it kind of ended their week for them. So it was a, it was a good week-long festivities for the kids. I said to a few of the kids that, I, I know I'm old, so I don't remember my graduation very well, but even most of our younger people don't really remember who spoke at their graduation, who said what. I could tell you right now, these kids are gonna remember their graduation for many years. It was, it was quite a festivity, and, you know. One of the things I've always said about, we can criticize everything and, and, but our district does great jobs at celebrating people and, and, and our students and, and staff and stuff. And I thought this was outstanding, so, and thank you to the entire town, John, you too. I didn't mean to exclude you, because you helped me, helped get this underway. But everybody was such a big support in this, and we want to just thank everyone, thank you.
I'm sorry, I think it should go, you, you have a partner in this as a senior class advisor that probably helped out quite a bit, that might be sitting to your right, that should be recognized as well.
Yeah, well.
Hard work.
Four years ago, when Mrs. Roach came to me and said, hey, let's be class advisors for this class, I really wasn't planning on a pandemic at any point. Senior was supposed to be the easy year, you, you build up, you have the prom, your junior year, and that's really stressful, and then senior is supposed to be all about fun and just showing up to things. That really didn't happen. But no, yeah, Cindy and, did a great job, and, and, you know, Eileen Sheehy, Josh Gould, Jim Daly. I mean, it's just been unreal. It, it was stressful, a lot of sleepless nights trying to figure this stuff out, but in the long run, it was great for kids, so thank you.
And, and just to indicate that we had a nice note from Principal Sheehy on that, too. We had a, our harbor master was recognized with a letter from a Mr. Wiggins out of North Burick. He launched his boat June 6th out of Wells, and had a fire on, in the boat, engine fire. And the Coast Guard asked for assistance from our harbor master. He went out and towed Mr. Higgins in. And Mr. Higgins was extremely pleased, then indicated in his letter how professional Michael York was in doing that. We had a short memo from Jim Lapola indicating his thanks for a coordinated effort in a hard rescue call down at the East Two Shore parking lot, where a gentleman fell and severely hurt himself at the end of the parking lot, off the rocks, and all departments worked in a nice way to bring that to a finality, and the person's unfortunately still in very serious condition. We then had a nice note from some folks to Chief Putnam regarding a one-year-old cat that gets stuck in a culvert. And after a little while, they called the police, and the police were able to get the cat out with the help of the fire department. So no, no climbing on that. And then in this time of turbulence, we had a nice note from a person in Wells who just recanted, not recanted, but told of several encounters with the Wells Police Department, and how, how great they, how great it was with those encounters. That's it.
Anything else from the board?
I think Kathy fell in a river, I think she just.
Well, if the chief gets a tone, we'll know that it happened. All right, we're moving on to Open to the Public, twice during the, twice during, you have the opportunity to...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I wanted to, before we get into that, indicate that I, I made an error of judgment about two, three weeks ago in working with the fire, rescue and police. We, I asked them to work together to resolve a situation that was a little bit troublesome in, in regards to what was being said on, on the streets and on how calls were being handled and so forth. And I asked them to work together to bring a plan back to myself and to the board to correct that. It took a little bit of time, and it was successful, but it did take three times. And at the last meeting, I made an error of judgment and asked our social media person to hold back on questions regarding that issue. And I want to apologize to Tim Roach and to Brittany and to the board that that was the wrong action on my part. Those questions should have been asked, and the simple answer would have been that we were in negotiations, and that the result was that a positive result. And I've shared that with the board. We're working in a coordinated way through dispatch under the 2018 plan that we had. And so I think the issue is, has ended with a positive result. But I did want to indicate that I did err in that situation.
Thank you, John.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, John.
Brittany?
All right. Yep, I'm here, I am.
I will follow up John's comments and apologize, because it seemingly impacted you, and it shouldn't have, so.
Oh, thank you.
I'm working upward from here on out, so ask away, I'm sure you have a few questions.
Okay, I just say, I, I did call Brittany, but I do want to publicly apologize to her if I anyway insinuated that she wasn't doing a good job. She does an outstanding job, and I apologize.
Thanks, Tim, appreciate that. We have one question from Sarah on Filet Pub, so I'll read that first. It was stated during the meeting that the permit was only until 9:30. Can we please clarify? The permit I saw was from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. I just want to be sure that the permit does not allow outdoor music until 1:00 a.m.
The permit is his year-round permit for indoor. What the ordinance allows outside is all businesses have to end at 9:30. So any music that he has outside would end at 9:30. But I believe if I heard the owner say that he's streaming the music inside, and I don't know if he'll do anything outside during the afternoon or early evening.
All right, are lodging facilities allowed to open their pool, campgrounds, hotels and condos?
This, this question has been asked so many times, and internally here, we have called the CDC, the code enforcement officer called, and pools can open. They have to go by some regulatory COVID-19 issues, like social distancing and so forth, but they can open.
Next question, I own a cottage in Wells and live in Mass. We come up only on weekends, Thursday through Sunday. Does the 72-hour testing rule mean that my wife and I need to have a test done every week prior to our weekend in Wells through August?
Well, unfortunately, I'm afraid you're the weekend warrior type that I, I have asked the commissioner about on our Zoom meetings every other week. They can't fit everybody into a squig, a square peg. So the answer unfortunately, right now, is that you would probably have to get a test every time you come up, if you're in a lodging facility, or in a seasonal home, or just to visit your home. If you're not getting a test, you will have to quarantine for the time you're here for the four days or three days, or whatever it is. I would strongly suggest that you call the governor's office and pose that question to them.
Will the restrooms remain open, or are they just open for this weekend as stated?
No, we're, we're opening them through a soft opening, I guess, Thursday, and we'll, we'll have them available right on through the season. You know, with COVID-19, anything's possible, but right now, we're, we're keeping them open.
Will the trolleys be operating this summer?
No.
Can I come to my campsite this weekend if I live in Mass?
If, if your campsite is your primary seasonal facility, yes, you can, but you have to quarantine and after June 26th, either quarantine or provide a, a test.
Next question. When does the Wells Public Library open?
Well, right now they are curbside open. You can call them, you can go online to their database library, order the books that they have and they'll bring them out and you can check them out at that time. What the State Library Association is trying to figure out is how to open up and let people in. And that's still in play in trying to decide that. As you can imagine, if you open it up, 15 people in our size library could come in at one time. They're going to be touching books, they're going to touch surfaces and everything like that. What the Library Association is trying to figure out is how to sanitize, how to secure that area. And that's what, that's what the stumbling block is, quite honestly. That's not Wells, that's the state.
Um, how can we get handicap beach chairs in Wells? Are they available?
We do have handicap beach chairs. You call the fire department, 7912, and reserve them.
Back on testing, what tests are acceptable? Is the instant test acceptable for COVID-19?
The tests that you would take in your state. Now, let me back up. Vermont and New Hampshire are non-required states for quarantine or testing. If you're from any other state than Maine, New Hampshire, Vermont, you would have to obtain a test that is a COVID-qualified test and it would have to prove negative within 72 hours of your visit.
Couple of questions about the town hall. Is the town hall open to pick up an absentee ballot?
The town hall, yes, but what we are doing is mailing ballots. All you have to do is request a ballot. It's automated from our, our website and state's website. I, I did mine the other day. It works great. You request the ballot, put in your home information and within a few days, the ballot will be sent to you.
Are appointments needed to register a new vehicle?
Yes.
A follow-up question from one that was asked three weeks ago. Has the town made any progress in identifying licenses and permits that can be processed via email?
If you're talking things that we're not doing presently, like dog licenses and just blocking on things, but on building permits, that's pretty well handled manually and there's pretty clear concise directions from our website how to do that. Building applications have been, being spit out within a few days are being received. We have a green box outside that people can deposit those building permits. Most, everything else can be put in there and it's, it's working pretty well. Automation is always being looked at and COVID-19 is a, a real sort of thing that makes efficiency and automation very, very needed to do our business, such as Finance Director's Beach Pass program. We've done, how many, Jody, now?
We've done 3,140 as of tonight through the office. We, we only had 600 to start. We are currently out of stickers here in the office, so we've done our 600. We've issued 53 more in permits. So the online system has done 2,487 stickers. We do encourage people to use the online system. By doing that, you're able to print a temporary pass that you can use. It gets emailed to you once you have successfully completed purchasing the sticker and then the sticker is mailed to you from the fulfillment center.
We are encouraging also everyone to use online car vehicle registration renewals. If you are just simply renewing your registration, the Rapid Renewal Program on, at the state through our website is a 10-minute exercise and you get your stickers within a couple of weeks. We have, Jody has brought that backlog down from where it was at 4,200 to.
As of today, we're down to 3,000, just a little over 3,000, but since our last meeting, we've processed 730 transactions.
So we're making progress. However, I, I want to make sure all the public is aware that the governor required us to set a deadline for registrations from February through June and that the Board of Selectmen at our last meeting took the latest possible, but it's July 11th, 2020, that you have to re-register your vehicles or else you're fair game on the road.
Mr. Car, can I say something? So I, so currently with the online system of booking appointments, we do have people calling asking about that deadline and they're looking to book out towards that date. I would caution people to get in and, because we're already a week out and almost two weeks out with appointments, that you don't wait till July 10th and expect to get an appointment.
A few more questions on the COVID-19 tests. A clarification question here, is the Abbott instant test fine enough to check into hotel and motels?
It should be. You know, I, I'll be honest, I, I don't know a whole lot about the COVID testing program. If you're from Massachusetts, I would check to see where you can get the test, sometimes CVS and other urgent cares and so forth, and, and check to see where you can get it. And again, it can't be older than 72 hours, so.
Are you required to show your test results every time you come up? Isn't that a violation of HIPAA and who's enforcing that people are actually doing that?
What, if you're going into a lodging facility, you have to sign a certificate. The certificate requires you to show that test.
Question on sidewalks. Will we be building sidewalks on Branch Road anytime soon?
Not anytime soon. We have a master sidewalk plan and that is not part of that plan.
A question here on the absentee ballot from Jim. He's not received an email confirmation. When will the ballots be mailed out if they've already signed up online?
I can't tell you for sure. I don't even have my tax return yet. So I, I don't really know. If, if you've gotten a email confirmation that the state sends out, there is a number on that confirmation. When you check to see where that absentee ballot is, you have to plug that number into the system and it comes back with a status report.
All right, that is everything so far.
Thank you, Brittany. The current agenda items, the first being review and action on accounts payable and payroll warrants. John?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have two warrants this evening. The first warrant is treasures warrant. Total warrant is $599,041.57. We have a school payment of $1,683,284. We have two pay periods since we last met. The first pay period dated June 4th, 2020, net $90,664. Second pay period dated June 11th, 2020, net $90,151.85. Withholding for those two periods, $74,727.90.
Questions under warrant? Take a motion.
I move to approve and sign the warrant dated June 16th, 2020 in the amount of
Call in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, thank you.
The second warrant is a special treasures warrant with $800 from We Are Wells Fund.
I move to approve and sign the warrant dated June 16th, 2020 in the amount of $800.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero again, thank you. Next is update discussion and action on committees, projects, issues, purchases and personnel. First being a presentation discussion and action to approve and authorize the harbor master and town manager to submit an economic development administration grant application for 2018 disaster relief funds to undertake annual mooring basin dredging and beach replenishment to house the equipment and also to proceed to file federal and state environmental permits to allow the mooring basin dredging. John?
Our harbor master, Michael York, has been working with the Southern Main Planning and Development Commission, who is a subcontractor to the EDA and through discussions of grant ideas, came up with this dredge concept that he'll explain to you in a minute. EDA has left over monies from the March 2018 presidential disaster that was called in York County for that storm that lasted three to four days. And this is not FEMA money, this is Economic Development Administration money that is meant to help with businesses, commercial vessels and so forth. So let me turn it over to Mike.
Yeah, so after talking with Paul Shoemaker and Chuck Morgan, they said the money was specifically for equipment. So I went to our stakeholders, the Army Corps, the DEP, US Fish, Maine Geologic, and asked them what the easiest dredge to permit was. And basically, it's the old excavator and barge. So I went back to write them a summary of what we were looking for and Paul and Chuck sent it up to Alan Brigham from the EDA and they all seemed to think that it was a good use of the funds and it appears we have no problem permitting it. My last contact today, who I hadn't talked to was Eric Hamlin from the DEP. I guess to stockpile the sand until we're ready to place it on the beach, we would need permits for upland waste storage. And he seems to think that because it's a beneficial use of the sand, that there will be an exemption and we should have no problems getting this done and permitted. Did everybody get the summary I mailed today, emailed?
Yes.
So the grant would be for $475,000. EDA would pay $380,000 and the well share would be $95,000 if we were to receive it. What this would do, and Mike has been working since he started with us, finding alternative ways to do ongoing maintenance of the harbor mooring basin that is our responsibility. It's not part of the federal channel and that to cut the cost of operating down there tremendously if we can go into this sort of system without depending on the Army Corps' hydraulic dredge contractor, which is a system that would require us to remove all the Helix mooring balls. And we've done this before and we spend over a million dollars every eight years doing it and we lose moorings right after that. We're down to.
Forty-one unusable.
Forty-one unusable mooring, moorings right now. What, if this is something the board would like to move on, we would have to submit a environmental permit, the NEPR process, and we would be looking at our engineering company to, to do that. So that is an additional cost to the town on that.
Absolutely. I think it's great, anything new to try to reclaim the harbor and I think Mike's done a great job of finding creative solutions to open up more of those moorings for revenue and, and cut down on costs that it takes to maintain it. So thank you so much for all the creative work that you've done and try to find some solutions.
Do you need a dollar amount in this?
I think what we need is a, a motion to proceed to submit the application for the barge, garage and excavator and to move forward in identifying an engineering company and cost of permitting.
Questions from the board? Kathy?
Yeah, I move to have the Board of Selectmen authorize the harbor master and town manager to file the EDA grant application for dredge equipment and equipment storage facility and to file the necessary federal, state and local permit applications for the work.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five, zero, thank you. And thank you, Michael, for your work once again.
Thank you for the support.
Next item is discussion and action on awarding a proposal for the historical rehabilitation work for the 1710 house. John?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for a couple of budget seasons, we've been putting a little money aside to help maintain the 1710 house next door to Town Hall. This is a very historic house. We have, since I've been here, been working on trying to maintain it as a museum. Unfortunately, manpower is not there to keep it open as a museum, but people should know that it's designed inside to be an educational, hands-on facility as to how houses of that type were built back in, in the 1700s. So it's very unique. We've had a lot of studies done on the house and we, we have, I have signed it over to our code enforcement officer to look at what the maintenance had to be. She was able to, through the budget committee, raise sufficient funds to do a number of different things. to do a number of different things this year. And I'd like to turn it over to Jodeen to explain.
Thank you. So the first portion of this project is going to be, we're going to be stripping these cedar shingles off the roof and repairing any sheathing that needs to be replaced. And then we're going to replace it with cedar shingles again, which is exactly what was there before. That was what was put there in 2000 when we rehabbed the building. And we're going to be using hot dip nails on that project. Is exactly what was done actually in the 1836 era. So that's one portion of the project. The second portion of the project is a mudroom that was put onto the building in 1970s. And since that is not historically correct, we can remove that. And it is kind of fallen away from the building. So we are going to remove that mudroom and replace portions of the exposed area with shingles for now. And then we'll get a second bid later on to actually take the shingles, which were actually put there in 1977, I think. Actually, 1932, they took the cladwood shingles, the cladwood off the back of the building and replaced it with cedar shingles for some reason. So we're going to get a second bid later on to replace those with cladwood again, which is authentic to the building. And then we're going to replace the greenhouse window. We're going to board that up and see if we can get an appropriate window that will fit the error as well. And that will be the project as it sits now. We'll also remove the foundation off that little mudroom and we'll remove some of the trees that are actually causing havoc.
So we went up and got a couple of quotes for the work. And the quote that we would like to put forward for consideration tonight is a quote from the North Shore Construction of South Portland of $18,950. The second quote we received was from US Site Solutions. It was $39,488.
Any other questions from the board?
I move to award the historical rehabilitation work to the 1710 house to the North Shore Construction Incorporated for the price of $18,950.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero again, thank you. Next is discussion and action on releasing the bid for the municipal land on Route 109. John?
This is Chairman, members of the board. Mike Livingston's here with us. He's done the brunt of the work. What this is as a setup to the discussion is that the original site of the new substation was on land of about 14 acres on 109 bordering Meeting House and 109. And that land, after a lot of analysis, showed that it really wasn't suitable as a site for the substation. We moved the site to the public works area and the town meeting allowed us to sell the land. We went out and went to bid on the land, got no bids with a minimum of $200,000 on it and came back and decided after talking to developers and so forth that they really needed to see a DOT driveway entrance permit. So the charge that the Board of Selectmen gave us was to go get that. And I'd like to turn it over to Mike.
Great, thank you, John. As John was describing, the property was put out to bid last fall, our open bid, hopefully with a minimum bid of $200,000 to sell the property. We got no bids. Some of the feedback I received from potential bidders was that they were worried about not getting a main DOT entrance permit as well as the Vernal Pool of Special Significance that's on the lot. They had those two concerns. So we, that bidding process was closed. We hired our Girl Palmer engineers to help us with getting a DOT entrance permit. Through quite a bit of going back and forth with DOT, DOT did agree to grant one road entrance permit to the property on Route 109 with a maximum of five dwelling units that could use that road. So that was very positive. We finally got DOT approval. And now the property can be put back out to bid for sale to the public is, would be the goal. I prepared a memo. I believe you all probably received it last week or the week before where I outlined at least my thoughts on putting it back out to bid. Some of the solutions to maybe getting some bids this time around will be to lower the price. That usually makes it more attractive to folks. We have the DOT permit in hand, which is another major factor. And my suggestion and recommendation is to, for the town to keep a portion of that property. The Vernal Pool of Special Significance is located on the Meeting House road frontage portion of the property. And the town could keep that as a conservation parcel. And that eliminates that concern for development of the remaining 9.7 acres. Also, with the DOT permit being limited to just five dwelling units, five dwelling units in that zone doesn't require anything more than acres than about five acres. So a potential buyer developer can develop those five lots without any hindrance by the town retaining 4.7 acres with a Vernal Pool on it.
Mike, that being said, are you recommending the land to go to 180 or you want to leave it at 200 since that would be 40,000 a lot?
The development of the property will involve constructing a road and getting subdivision approval for those five lots. So those are costs that someone's going to have to incur in order to get those five lots. We didn't receive any bids when we had a minimum bid of 200. So my thought was to lower it to 180 to see if we get interest this time. Someone certainly could come in with a higher bid with the knowns that we have now, being that it has a DOT entrance permit granted and the elimination of the Vernal Pool on the property as well. Hopefully, we get more activity and more bids.
Okay. Questions from the board?
My opinion would be to leave it at 200, especially if we went through all the trouble of getting the permit.
Other thoughts?
I would agree with John. Because it seemed like that was the big hangup for a lot of people.
Any other thoughts? Ken?
I'm, yeah, I'm fine, 200.
I'm fine with 200.
It's five lots. It's a pretty good deal. Five lots, isn't it? I'm not a land guy, but...
Well, they do have to put some other money into it, but I think we should try it and see what happens.
Okay, so it's 200?
Make the motion.
Okay. I move to release the bid on the municipal land on Route 109 and set the minimum bid at the, accepted at $100,000.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Five zero, thank you. Next item is update discussion and possible action on the status and need for replacement of the New Hall Road Plank Bridge. John?
Yeah, 2020 hasn't been our friend on a number of things, COVID-19 and some infrastructure projects. It just seems to keep on going. This, this one on the New Hall Road is a, well, it's a plank bridge that has been rebuilt several different times. And unfortunately, it cannot be rebuilt because the substructure is not solid. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Carol Murray.
Thanks, John. This came about, the guys were out regrading the road because of several potholes. And they made a call to Paula and I and said, you better come look at this. When we got out there, you could actually step hard on this bridge and move the material under it. It was clear it was unsound. I was pretty nervous about the loader we had on the other side of the bridge and the fully loaded truck that we had sitting there. That was in the afternoon. We made a call to Jim Hall, who you all met through Zoom. The structural engineer that's been working on other infrastructure in town. And he was able to get out there at nine o'clock the next morning. Jim's initial reaction, he climbed down the riprap and looked at the side and kind of looked at the abutments. And he said, this doesn't look too bad. Then he got into the culvert itself about halfway across and he hollered up. He said, Carol, do you want the good news or the bad news? I said, give me the bad news. And he said, okay, there is no good news. Essentially, this is several layers of mismatched material. It was an old stone box culvert, not unlike, we're under many, many, many roads and bridges. The abutments are stone and they're fairly, in fairly good shape. There was a large, flat piece of granite placed over it for a deck. Unfortunately, that has cracked right in the middle. On top of that granite, Edgar placed, you remember the old days when equipment had to go out along power lines and then everybody threw down railroad timbers that were tied together for a mat? And it was in the era before fabric. Well, we had some of those up in the pit. So Edgar took the best of the mess that was up there, put those down, then put soil on top of it. Also, at some point in time, two steel stringers were placed, which have now just literally rotted away. How the steel stringers came about, none of us are sure. Paula's here too, because she's got more of the history than I do. And then on top of that, there's the dirt and the, and the, wow. Our Jersey barriers are there now. I guess I should say for a dead load. There is one structural piece that's in very good shape. It's a piece of a plastic form that was used to pour some concrete. Except for that, all of the elements in this bridge are failing or failed. Now, it's not going to run the danger of someone falling through down to the brook. You would fall through the timber ties, which are a mess. The reason the Jersey barrier is there is we moved people over away from those steel stringers that are failing and put them on the best part of the bridge. So you would, you would fall through the timbers. It wouldn't be a very pleasant experience, but you wouldn't end up 20 feet below in the brook. There is a family that lives on the other side. Jim Hall has been working directly with them. The issue being they move a camper in and out and they have a trailer that they move some four-wheelers and a side-by-side on. So we're trying to get our hands around that. The most complicated piece of this whole thing is going to be figuring out how to keep access viable during construction. Construction is probably going to take about a year. My vision would be to drop in a box culvert or potentially a three-sided structure, depending on how the environmentalists come out on the fact that trout spawn in this stream. But right now, the lag time is about eight weeks to even order those precast elements. And then we've got a utility line that we're trying to deal with to move out of the way, but that's going to be worked around. We've reached out to the state DOT, asked them if they have an Acro Bridge or a Bailey Bridge or any sort of temporary structure. They said no, but they might be willing to sell a town some old steel to make a bridge. So there's a lot of moving pieces. In the meantime, Jim said, if you post it for three tons, he said, I feel confident that that will be safe. We did put the Jersey barrier there to push traffic away from the weakest part of the structure. It's, it's okay. I'm nervous about going into snow season, to be honest with you, with a 10-foot opening. That's going to require us to do some creative thinking. I'd like to go forward and get this project being worked on so that we can get it designed and get all of these moving pieces corralled and focused going forward. Be happy to answer any questions you've got.
More of a statement, Carol, than a question, but it does sound very good when you start talking about people falling down but not dropping 20 feet. And obviously, there's a major issue there and this has to be fixed. I really don't see anything other than authorization for you to proceed to get this thing started because it's going to be a lengthy project.
Well, I'd appreciate that because it would be an awful abrupt stop for anyone driving a vehicle over there if they came through that railroad timber. And literally, you can stand there and shift your weight back and forth and move those timbers. That's how degraded they are.
Carol, what do you ballpark this one at, if you could?
Yeah, my guess would be about 2 to 250 for the structure. The big unknown is a temporary bridge, but I would put another potentially 100 grand on that. Now, this looks like an excellent candidate. When I was being shared with the town of Agunkwa, Jim Hall and I worked on a grant application to DEP for Captain Thomas Road. And we did receive that. That was $95,000. So come September 1, when those grants open again, we're going to be ready to submit an application. This is a trout stream. Both Jim and I feel it's pretty good in terms of a candidate. The other reason I'd be optimistic is Washington DC is now talking about a $1 trillion infusion into infrastructure. Most of it traditional infrastructure with some money for rural broadband. The transportation bill expires September 30th. So I think there's a good opportunity there for us to pursue some infrastructure financing.
Other questions or comments from the board?
Kathy, you're muted.
I agree that I think this is something that's a life-threatening factor here if we don't get it fixed. And there is a family that lives on the other side. And I would really hope that we would move forward on this.
If there's no other comments, I'll take a motion.
I move to proceed with the development of plans for a replacement system for the New Hall Road Bridge over the Green River.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Yep. Can I bring up something?
Yep, go ahead.
I saw a note that said that when we voted to release the bid on the municipal land on Route 109 and set the minimum at $200,000, that we fought to exclude the 4.7 acres being retained by the Town of Wells. So I really think that since that was the plan, that we should redo that motion.
That's true. That's a good point.
Make an amendment, Kathy, to include the removal of up to five acres.
Right. I make the motion to release the bid on the municipal land on Route 109, excluding the 4.7 acres of land being retained by the Town of Wells as minimum bid accepted at $200,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And thank you to Jim Smith for putting that out.
Our next item was discussion and action on the award of the 2020-21 pavement bid. John?
This is Chairman, members of the board. The Public Works Director put together a bid for paving for 2020. The bid came in this past week with two bidders, Libby Scott and Allstate Asphalt. Libby Scott was low at $981,376. And I'll turn it over to Carol on that.
Sure. My estimate was an even million, so I'm happy to say I was not the low bidder. That Libby Scott did in fact beat my number. Allstate Asphalt might be a new name to you folks. I've worked with them in New Hampshire for decades. I was glad they submitted a bid and I know they're going to get aggressive about municipal work. The comment made after the bid opening by Terry was, wow, did you get a good price? So I feel pretty good that we did get a good price. We did do some things. We did do some things differently. For example, there is now a completion date of October 16th, so we will not be paving in the snow or on frozen ground. In addition, the contractor has to supply the gravel to back up his shoulders versus the town doing it, which ties up our equipment and our personnel and uses up our gravel. So I feel good about the bid. I think it was amazingly close for a bit of this size. And I feel comfortable that the town is protected with the specifications we put together.
Good job.
Take a motion.
I move to award the 2020 paving bid to Libby Scott Incorporated for the bid price of $981,376.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is discussion and action on awarding the second year renewal of the option of the town to Down East Energy. John?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, last year we did a a consolidated fuel bid for heating. Heating. It had a option of a second year. And the last year was awarded to Down East Energy for propane, number two oil and kerosene. And so we have talked to Down East Energy and did some negotiating for the renewal. And Down East will do the following. Fix the price of propane at $1.049. Oil fixed, number two oil fixed at $1.659. And kerosene at $1.999 per gallon. I would recommend that we go with the fixed price. I think the fuel, even though it's low, it's creeping up. There's volatility there. And I'm not sure we want to play the market at at this point.
I agree. Any questions or comments from the board? Take a motion.
I move to award the fiscal year 21 heating fuel bid, oil, propane and kerosene to Down East Energy for the propane fixed price of $1.049 per gallon and oil fixed price of $1.659 per gallon and kerosene fixed price of $1.999 per gallon.
Second.
All in favor? Five zero. Thank you. Next is discussion and action on certifying the 2020 warrant and notice of election calling for the Community School District Number 18 Budget Validation Referendum. This is a counter signing of the Wells of Gunwick School District Warrant. If there's no questions on it, I'll take a motion.
I move to certify the 2020 warrant notice of the election calling for the Wells of Gunwick Community School District Number 18 Budget Validation Referendum.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero again. Thank you. Next is discussion and updates on personnel committee assignments, resignations and issues. Nothing from the town manager under the Board of Selectmen. The appointments to the Wells Lodging Facility Advisory. Do you have that list?
I do have that list. Hold on one second. What did I do? I moved it all around here. Okay, I got it. You ready?
Go ahead.
Okay. Appointments to the Wells Lodging Facility Advisory. It will be Selectman Member Ishan Roach. Planning Board Member would be Bob Sullivan. President Sharon Myers. Resident Ron Collins. President Scott DeFelice. Under the lodging, there would be five. Lodging Representative Derry Downey. Lodging Representative Irene Crocker. Lodging Representative Katie Kelly. And Lodging Lodging Representative Demetria McCabe. And Lodging Representative Ron, Ron.
Spears.
Here. Yeah, thank you.
Ron, Ron Avery or Ron Spears?
No, Ron Avery. Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Five zero. Thank you. And thank you to all the people that put forth their application and were willing to serve.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. Next item then is the reappointment of Mary Mara as a Democratic Alternative Member to the Voter Registration Appeals Board, term to expire 2023.
I move that we reappoint Mary Mara as Democrat Alternative Member to the Voter Registration Appeals Board with term to expire June 23.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll go four zero. Next is the reappointment of Robert Zizso as a Republican Alternate Member to the Voter Registration term to expire 2023.
I move to reappoint Robert Zizso as a Republican Alternate Member to the Voter Registration Appeals Board with term to expire June 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero. Thank you. The appointment of Jessica Kais as Warden for the Presidential Primary referendum and annual town meeting elections on July 11, 2020.
I move to appoint Jessica Kais as Warden for the Presidential Primary Special Referendum and Annual Town Meeting Elections on July 11, 2020.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, July 14.
Oh, that's right. It is July 14. Okay. Jessica Kais as one for the Presidential Primary Special Referendum and Annual Town Meeting Elections on July 14, 2020. All of us say that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four to zero. Thank you. Next is the appointment of Carrie Van Shack as Deputy Warden for the Presidential Primary Special Referendum Annual Town Meeting Elections on July 14, 2020.
I move to appoint Carrie Van Shack as Deputy Warden for the Presidential Primary Special Election Special Referendum and Annual Town Meeting Elections on July 14, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Five zero. Is this redundancy of the next one? Appointment of Jessica Kais, that's redundant?
Oh, this one is one says July 14. Maybe that was what it was. Is this the same thing?
Says the identical thing besides the dates.
Right, except the date is this one, the date is correct on the July 14. Yeah.
So we've done all these. We're covered?
Yep, yep.
All right, then moving on to discussion and action on accepting donations and bequests. First is a $100 subway gift card donation from Terry Patterson to the Wells PD.
I move that we accept the generous donation and write a letter of thanks to the donor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you. Next is Terry Patterson, once again, $100 subway gift card to the Wells Fire Department.
I move that we accept the generous donation and write a letter of thanks to the donor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you. Next, $143.98 donation from the Library Board of Trustees to the Wells Public Library survey materials.
I move that we accept the generous donation and write a letter of thanks to the donor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you. Next is $250 from Jaclyn Danner to the Town of Wells for the We Are Wells Fund.
I move that we accept the generous donation and write a letter of thanks to the donor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you again. Next is $5.99 donation from Altitude the Wells Public Library for the purchase of a self published book.
I move that we accept the generous donation and write a letter of thanks to the donor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero again. Thank you. Next is $4.99 donation from the the Town of Wells.
I move that we accept the generous donation and write a letter of thanks to the donor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you. Last, we have $250 from Stephen LaPlante to the Wells Public Library for purchase gift certificates to be used for prizes during their summer reading program.
I move that we accept the generous donation and write a letter of thanks to the donor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero again. Thank you. Next is discussion and action on approving the minutes of the June 20 meeting. Any corrections or changes need to be addressed?
Move for approval of the June 2nd, 2020 meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you. Good job again, Cindy. About to new business for the second time this evening. We're open to the public. Brittany, do you have any questionnaires?
Yep, just a few. First question, what was the thought behind putting hard pack gravel on public way for of Atlantic Ave?
Well, the request was made. Right away for is a fairly long right away that has a beaded driveway into a house. The hard pack sand or materials were put from Atlantic Avenue to his driveway entrance many years ago to allow for his vehicles to get in without getting stuck on the live sand. We had multiple requests at Zoom meetings of the Board of Selectmen in May asking for a a harder material from the driveway entrance down to the seawall so that people could walk easier to the beach. And that's what I believe, Carol, you did in the last few weeks.
That's correct, John. You had asked us also about putting a mat there, which really doesn't work because of the driveway. The driveway complicates things. But yes, we tried to restore things or put things back in a reasonable shape so that driveway could be used and also so people could access the beach without walking through live sand, which is like walking through quicksand.
Next question.
Next question. Yep. When will the Jetty Public Way entrance be open for those parking at the lot?
We are hopeful that that should be open within a couple of weeks, if not sooner. The eggs have hatched and the birds are needing to move to the beach to be accessible to their food. And as they move down, we think they will vacate their nest on the walkway. And when they do, we will reopen through permission by the Audubon and US Fish and Wildlife. We will open that and hopefully it will be our our matting system will be put down and life will return to normal.
Will lifeguards be on watch this summer? I'm sorry.
Yes. Yes, we have a great group of lifeguards, a full complement of lifeguards. And they are drilling this in two weeks. They are doing protective work weekends and they they're doing a great job.
Brittany, before you ask the next question, Tim, did you have something?
No, I'll get it in a minute. Sorry.
Okay. Go ahead, Brittany. I'm sorry.
No worries. That's that's everything new that we got.
Just a quick clarification. I think there was some questions that about the COVID testing. Motel only texted me to say that the rule is that lodging will not accept or inspect anyone's COVID test. They don't look at the test. Or doctors know, we will accept their certification only. So it's a certification. It's not. I think people are questioning HIPAA laws and all that stuff, but it's a certification that they're.
Yeah, my understanding was basically like an affidavit that you have the test and that you're verifying that those are the results. But you don't have to.
hotels are not looking at tests.
Thanks for the clarification.
Yep.
That's a new business. We're going to go. Oh, are you something else?
Sorry. Yep, we got one more that just came in. How are we protecting our lifeguards from COVID-19?
How are we protecting our lifeguards from COVID-19? They are social distancing. They're out in the open. I guess the comment would be when they do a rescue or something like that. I I think they are going to be through, go through some training on that. But in reality, it is, it is what it is.
Thank you.
Anything else, Brittany?
No, that's all.
Move on to new business. The second time this evening, we're going to be open to the public. And inform people at this point, at the end of our meeting, once we go off the air, will be a half hour budget informational presentation of our budget. And if there's anyone before we open to the public now, just to let people know if you have questions, we still have another opportunity to answer those questions after you see this presentation for the second time. So if you watch it and have questions, write them down and we'll answer them at our next meeting. So now we're moving on to open to the public. Anything else at all, Brittany? Anything on the budget at all from last week?
Sorry, I was on mute. No, I did not see anything about the budget. And I think that's everything.
Okay.
John, all bathrooms on the beach are going to be open starting Thursday.
That is our game plan right now. We have our plumber cleaners doing doing everything they can to open them. Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we're onto the town manager's report. John?
One item, we are moving forward with a regional household hazardous waste collection project. We're working with Kenny Bunk, Kenny Bunk Ford Rundle. And August 29th, at the Kenny Bunk Solid Waste Facility on Sea Road, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Will be that timeframe will be handing out the type of materials that they will take. And we hope it will be as successful as it has been in the past.
Nothing like talking about trash, huh, John?
Right.
What a way to end the night. If nothing, anything else from the board members? If nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion. We adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Five zero. Thank you. Good night. Watch this presentation that's going to follow this, that Chris is going to continue. So stay well, stay safe, and we'll see you in two weeks.
Night everybody.
Hello, fellow residents of the Town of Wells. Mike Livingston, the Town Engineering Planner. And this is our annual video we do for informational purposes for the upcoming town warrant that'll be occurring on July 14. Like to start off, the purpose of this meeting, of course, is to to provide the public with background information on the articles to be voting on at the town meeting. And we try to cover most of the articles in this informational session. But we do try to keep it brief, to keep your your attention with the information across to everyone as much as possible. So the first item on the agenda is the budget, which is a critical item that you'll all be voting on. And I'll turn it over to John and Jody.
Thank you, Mike. I'm John Carter, Town Manager. And in a few days, you will be receiving the town meeting book. It looks like this in the mail. We are with the Board of Selectmen having three informal hearings on the budget and the warrant articles associated with that. It is a process that we undergo from early fall through March. And I'm going to turn it over to Jody, our Finance Director, to kind of describe the process.
So back in December, department heads produced their budget. The Town Manager and I took all that information that was submitted by department heads, compiled compiled it into a budget that we then presented to the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen, once they accept that budget, turn it over to the Budget Committee. The Budget Committee started meetings in the first week of January and we just finished with the Budget Committee just recently. But um, part of the task of the Budget Committee is to make sure that we present to, back to the selectmen and to the voters, a budget that is under LD1, which is the tax cap that we have to follow. And the budget that we have proposed is meeting that goal. We are under the tax cap by almost $175,000.
This is all processed through our town charter and is regulated by that. Our budget process has produced a budget for FY21, which starts July 1st. And the budget is um, is divided in the book. So you can see revenues, salaries, operations, capital improvements, and the standard warrant articles that are passed through and are part of the capital improvement uh project, uh program. On salaries, we are up uh 2% to 4%. We are in negotiations with uh four labor groups. And we have finalized one contract and we have three other contracts as of today, June 1st, to resolve. We are making good progress there. The gross operating budget is up. Uh, that is because of our debt financing and uh benefits and other insurances. We have warrant articles that are up for the purpose of buying conservation lands, which we'll be getting into in a minute. And our capital improvement plan is down by almost 22%. Revenues are a little bit off this year, uh, but they're still very healthy. Even in the COVID-19 era, we believe we're closing FY20 in the black. As we speak, June 1st, it looks that way. In FY21, July 1st, we will be um watching the first quarter as well as the second quarter and putting some funds aside, just making sure in that situation that revenues are coming in and that we won't be making those expenditures uh until we see a revenue picture and and how healthy we are as a community. So our budget um is is locked in place. We are looking at a July 14th uh special um town meeting in the sense that it was moved from June 9th by the governor to July 14th because of the COVID-19. And uh, we'll be at the junior high. We urge people to do absentee voting um at at the request absentee ballots. And you can do that from our website under the town clerk page or by calling the town clerk or contacting the Secretary of State for an absentee ballot. So Jody, um, what other important uh data points that you see with the budget?
So um, in our proposed budget, taxpayers will see that we're looking at a school tax increase of approximately 1.28%. The tax rate that we're presenting in the budget is based on a 1% increase in valuation. We won't know what our valuation is until the assessors through with her spring pickup, which will happen later this um summer. But currently, if we only pick up the 1% in tax valuation, we're looking at a tax rate of $3.56 on the municipal side, um, which would be up 29 cents from last year. And then we want to note that our budget does include some key things. In the CIP project, there's some equipment that we need to purchase. And then we also have a bond that's on this year's warrant article that will be asking you to vote to allow us to go to bond. So that is one of the biggest items on the budget.
And we'll be talking about that in a moment.
Great. And uh, for the voters, uh, all the budgetary articles are Articles 3 through 13. That'll be on the town warrant in the ballot. Articles 15, uh, 14, 15, and 16 are regarding the conservation land acquisitions that John had referenced earlier. And uh, we have Keith Fletcher from the Conservation Commission that's available here at the meeting as well to discuss those items. All three involve the land acquisitions of conservation lands. So Keith, can you describe each of those to us?
I sure will. Thank you very much. So Articles 14, 15, and 16 come from the Conservation Commission and carry on the tradition in the town of Wells of purchasing some land and setting it aside for conservation, both for wildlife and for people to enjoy, to protect water quality and um kind of keep some of the rural character here in Maine, the beautiful town we are in. So Article 14 is a conservation land purchase. This piece of land is between Meeting House Road and Route 109. Although the warrant article says 60 acres, we've had some survey work done. We believe it to be 74 acres. This tract of land will be accessed, not now, but in the future by the public from the Eastern Trail, which we expect to come through in about, I don't know, five to 10 years through that area. So right now it's off a private road. We're not encouraging people to go down a private road. But it is an important conservation piece. Uh, and to help the town afford this parcel of land, uh, we did, we were successful in obtaining two large sums of money. One was $120,000 grant from the Maine Natural Resources Conservation Program. And the other was a $70,000 bargain sale by the landowner, who in that way gave the first gift. So this is a beautiful land. It's wooded wetlands, um, lovely for wildlife. It's very important as a stopping point for especially large animals moving between conservation areas to the south and west, up to Kennebunk Plains and back. We know black bear move through here, moose, all sorts of critters use this land. So the town, uh, we're requesting $120,000 from the Land Bank, which is a capital improvement fund uh for this purpose, which would add on to the $190,000 and other funds that were raised and result in acquisition of of this this parcel of land uh for conservation. The the next one, Article 15, is an important addition to the Fendersen Wildlife Commons, which is a large wetland that is mostly in town ownership now. It protects water quality in the Maryland River and Eaton Brook and uh helps protect water quality in wells and so forth, uh, and is also favored by hunters. And this would improve access to that backland there um off of Bald Hill Road and would also protect stream frontage along Eaton Brook. It's a very beautiful piece of land and uh we'll be getting that at a very good price. And for that, we are requesting $144,000 from the Land Bank, that capital improvement fund I mentioned earlier to acquire that. And uh, that would again improve access and it's also just great habitat, beautiful, beautiful land in there. And last is Article 16, which is been planned for a while. This is a six acre addition to the Getchell um wildlife commons that the town purchased several years ago. A really interesting piece of land that it is over 130 acres. It has a very diverse habitat, uh, meadows, scrubs, shrub wetlands, uh, scrubby lands, old farm foundations, things like that. Interesting piece of land. But what this would do is really improve access to that land, which is uh, the current access is on a road, but it's very wet. So this is nice, high, dry access. This six acres um is also used currently by folks who train bird dogs. There's a nice course set up for training uh bird dogs for hunting and for pheasants. So uh, this, this, as part of that, we will be working with the Bragden Estate also to give them a right of way over a strip of town land that will improve their ability to manage their land off Route 9. And so you'll see that um in the second part of the article's description. But um, so we hope with this six acres, besides the fact that it's a lovely field, nice in its own right, it's it's great legal access to to Getchell pasture and label people to cross um crossover into that wildlife commons. And for that, we're asking $82,000, although we think we can bring it in a little less than that because the survey costs will not be as high as we first thought. They're all great projects. I hope you support them. They all got unanimous votes in favor from both the Select Board and the Budget Committee. Please support the work of the Conservation Commission. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Keith. Um, and if people want to know where the exact location of those properties are in a, in the appendix of the uh book that you'll get in the mail, appendix 1, 2, and 3 uh show the locations of each of those parcels.
Thank you, Mike.
The next article to be discussed is Article 17, which is the road bond issue and seawall bond issue. And I'll turn over that discussion to Carrie, Carol Murrell.
Thanks, Mike. Um, it's actually three components. There's roads, there's seawalls, and also a bridge. All, all of these items are critical pieces of infrastructure that need some attention. I'll tackle the roads first and then Jim Hall from Dubon King is also here. And we'll talk more about the bridges and seawalls with Jim. He's a structural engineer, but he does speak English, not just engineering. So I think you'll find he's informative. Swamp John Road, as you're all aware, has um been in a bad state of disrepair, maybe never a good state of repair. And quite frankly, the only way to fix it is to go back down to the bottom of the road and rebuild it from ground level back up. And unless you get water out from underneath the pavement and get good material under the pavement, you'll never keep a road. So that's, that's why this project seems very expensive. It is, but it's a one-time fix. And then you have a road that's gonna be there for seven to probably 11 years with with nothing being done and then only minor crack filling and that sort of maintenance. A million dollars seems like a lot, but there is a lot of traffic on that road. It's not just people that live on the road and it's not just gravel trucks. It's constant traffic. This will fix it correctly. And as I said, we can, we can say it's been done and you'll have a good road to travel on for a substantial amount of time with only minor maintenance in the future. Robinson Road and Pine Ledge Road um were accepted by the town when the development was done. Unfortunately, as is typical back in that era, the drainage was not designed with existing and and in fact, future demands on that system being considered. Those folks that live on that U essentially have lived with road drainage into their basements, into their front yards for a long time. It is so flat and so ledgy that there's really not an easy way to get the drainage collected and and appropriately dealt with. As we started working on this project, it became pretty clear that it was going to be necessary to collect all the drainage in a retention pond, let Mother Nature do some evaporation from that. But also in high storm times, have an overflow mechanism where rainwater could in fact, collect and then be discharged to a pond. So that all added to the cost of the project. It's been promised to these folks for a long, long time that live there, as well as those of us that traveled through there. And it's really now time to fix the problem so they can have full enjoyment of their property without the town's water compromising that. So yes, that's up over a million dollars. Again, it seems like a lot. But it's the appropriate way to fix the problem so we never have to go back there and do it again, except for routine maintenance. We brought Jim Hall on board with Dubon King because I'm, I'm an engineer, but I'm not a structural engineer. And I took Jim on kind of a field trip to go look first at Drake's Island. So Jim, if you want to talk a little bit about that bridge, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, no problem. Thanks, Carol. Uh, yeah, the Drake's Island Bridge uh is routinely inspected by the Maine Department of Transportation. And the, during the last inspection, they sent a letter of deficiency to the town stating that there were certain deficiencies in the bridge that needed to be addressed. Carol reached out and asked if we could take a closer look. Uh, on further uh investigation, uh, we noticed that the timbers are in significantly poor condition, in particular the substructure, which which means that which are the timbers that support the bridge. The timbers uh for, that make up the pier have significant deterioration and have marine bores. In addition to the poor condition of the timber, um, all of the rail on the bridge and the approach rail has either failed or is in the process of failing. Given that these are life safety issues, um, you know, there's something that the, needs to be addressed immediately. Given the challenging uh environment and the geometrics of the Drake's Island Bridge, we've recommended to the town that they completely replace the bridge. It provides a single point of access to Drake's Island and uh the construction will be rather complex to uh, you know, maintain traffic. So we're recommending that they do, you know, a single, um, as opposed to a rehabilitation at this point. It makes the most sense for the long-term uh impacts to the community on Drake's Island to to replace it um at this point.
So while Jim was here, um, we also took a look at some seawalls. We started out at Casino Square. Um, again, I'm not a structural engineer, but I was concerned about the integrity of that seawall. We then looked um at a couple of other walls, one of which is a FEMA project from a year ago in March in that storm. We have an extension to our FEMA grant to bring us through November of this year. So Jim, maybe you could talk a little bit about the seawalls and what you see there?
Sure. Uh, I guess to start with, the uh, the FEMA project is uh, the Crescent Beach uh wall is about a 200-foot section of wall that was severely damaged in a storm event. There is a, it's currently supported by a concrete wall and steel sheet pile uh system. The steel sheet pile system uh, that's part of it, has been completely damaged. So it's no longer providing any structural capacity to the wall. This wall system uh, you know, is immediately supporting uh Webhanet Road. So that that section of the wall, you know, really needs to be replaced immediately. The subbase materials below the road at this point, um, it's, you know, without a subsurface investigation, it's hard to tell exactly what's supporting the road. So we've recommended that they go, we go in and and do some uh soil borings to test, see exactly what's supporting the road. And, you know, and immediately replace the steel sheet piles. So I guess that's the section at Crescent. I guess the other areas along Webhanet, there are, need significant repair. It, it looks like uh, it's been um kind of rehabilitated uh off and on over the years. But uh, you know, there's certain sections that are gonna require um significant concrete rebuild, rehabilitation. There's large cracks and spalls. Um, and if uh, while we're out fixing this section that's failed, you know, if we, if we patch and seal and chip uh the the sections with significant deterioration, we can extend the service life of of those remaining pieces of wall. And I guess the last segment was the section at Casino Square. When we looked at the section at Casino Square, um, the section of Casino Square is is the concrete's in poor condition as well. There's severe cracking. Uh, there's movement in the wall that's just north of the lookout. It looked like the lookout section had been rehabilitated at some point, but the concrete um in that section has been, is failing as well. So uh, you know, we're working currently on, on a cost to replace that. But right now we're looking at proposing maybe a a hybrid of some of it gets rehabilitated and some of it gets. hybrid of some of it gets rehabilitated and some of it gets replaced. But it's in very, very poor condition. If you go along the beach there, you can see the large concrete spalls. You know, it sees heavy traffic in the summer, and it doesn't have an extended service life left in it without a significant rehabilitation or replacement.
But having said that, I want to be sure everybody understands that it's safe to travel. If they were in danger of imminent failure, we would be closing the roads or taking other protective measures. Hopefully, that helps explain the projects that we're looking for the bond on. And that's just the engineering side. I think John wants to talk a little bit about the financial side of it.
So the cost of doing this work is estimated around $4.5 million. We are in the development planning phase. We have two engineering costs presently for the road work and drainage work. We don't have yet, from Mr. Hall, coming within the next few weeks, cost estimates for the Drake's Island Bridge and the three seawalls. One of the seawalls will be reimbursed by FEMA at 75%, but we have to pay out 100% and wait for the 75 to come to us. And that will possibly include moving utility lines to the opposite side of the street on the Crescent Beach project. We went to the Board of Selectmen, and Carl Eckstead, our chair, is with us tonight. And we had a discussion with the Board of Selectmen. They asked Jody to work on the spreadsheet that we put together through their recommendations when we put the public safety complex of looking at 20 years out and taking into account the LD1, the requirement of having 60 to 90 days of operating funds, and together whether our cash would carry us into the future, if we were cash flow into the future, if these, if this $4.5 million bond would take place. We then, and we'll talk briefly on that, we then went to our bond counsel and bond broker, and our bond broker has put together a plan where we would do bond anticipation notes to fund the projects, and then we right-size the bond to be no more than 4.5, or if it's less, then it would be less than that. So Carl, did you want to say anything on that?
Yeah, first off, since we're talking about the overall budget, I wanted to thank the administration, all the department heads, and the Budget Committee for all of the work and effort put in to get us to where we are. Jody, being the keeper of the funds, has done a wonderful job with Casey Welch, her assistant. And believe me, nobody, nobody wants at this stage of the game to be talking about borrowing another $4 or $5 million, but as Carol and Jim Hall have said, you know, these are things that are life safety. They may not be imminent, dangerous right now, but this is not going away. The folks on Pine Ledge I've worked with over the last three years, they've been extremely patient. This is a project that needs to be done, and of course Swamp John is something that, it's no longer cut and paste and throw some coal patch on it and fix it. This is, this is a road that's heavily traveled that needs to be fixed. So in looking at this from the Board of Selectmen's perspective, all five of us are totally agreement on numbers, if I'm not mistaken, we're going to be around 1.5% interest rate. And, you know, with the COVID-19 and the federal government, we only can hope that with the getting in front of this and voting this in now, that maybe, just maybe, there's a way for us to get some federal dollars coming back to us. So we're ahead of the curve by doing that. So we wholeheartedly support the 4.5 million. If it can be less, it will be. But we certainly, for a few months now, ever since the pandemic has hit, we've been asking a lot of questions, and Jody's been keeping us informed with the town manager in regards to where we stand financially. Certainly, we're all concerned about the budget. We're going to be in the black, as the town manager has said, for this year, and we will be watching probably almost on a daily basis in this next budget cycle to see where we stand to make sure that we remain healthy and strong. Because we've been so ultra-conservative over the last 20 years, probably, by putting money away for buying equipment and doing things the way we've done it, we are financially in pretty good shape versus some other communities. So kudos to Jody and her staff and all the administration, working collectively together so that we can do things like put the land in conservation, which has always been supported by the town. We still have the ability to do things like that and to keep the people safe. So from the Board's perspective, we wholeheartedly support these projects.
Well, great. That's a great discussion on the warrant, the warrant article involving the bond issue. And to wrap things up, I think John might have wanted to say a few words about the voting procedure. You already touched upon it earlier, but July 14th is the date.
Yeah. Normally, we would have voted June 9th, but the governor pushed off the elections to July 14th. The Board of Selectmen moved the town meeting, the annual town meeting, to that date. And we are encouraging people to either do absentee voting or be at the polls, which is at the junior high on the 14th from 8:00 to 8:00 PM. And so we are, as I said earlier, mailing out our town meeting booklet the week of June 1st, and that should be in the hands of everyone by the weekend. So thank you very much.
Thank you all, and stay well.